But anyway, that's the only downfall again, but I don't think it's a bad thing.
It's okay, it's something we probably will look at.
Well, I don't know, I think, you know, I think it was something we could discuss, that's for sure. Ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order, it's now seven o'clock, and, excuse me, any additions to the agenda? Hearing that, somebody wished to move the agenda as presented?
Absolutely.
Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing that all in favor? Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, minutes of previous meeting of January fourteenth. Okay, any questions or here's emissions, somebody wish to move? Georgie? Any question on Georgie's motion? Hearing that all in favor? Yes, carry. Okay, moving on to four point one, which is in a car. Board meeting. Any questions on... That one at all? Okay, um, if not, do we want to move all?
You can move all at once.
Yeah, we can move all at once, I guess, well, yeah.
We see it for information.
Yeah, okay, then we'll move on to four point two, the upper order of excellent nomination. Any questions on that? Then again, if you have any suggestions or ideas, definitely seek Kim and Karen, we can get going on it.
Do we send this out to anyone?
No, not really, um, I don't know, do we have any other groups that we think we could, should or could, or... I don't know either, like, I mean...
It just seems sometimes, I know there's lots of good, strong leadership and volunteers in our community, but I don't know if we're just too modest sometimes to step forward and maybe need to spread the word a little more.
Yeah, and again, I, you know, it's, I mean, the deadline is fast approaching, February fifteenth, but, um, if you can think of somebody that we should send it to, I mean, you know, definitely, let Kim or Karen know and we can definitely get it out, because it's not, you know, it's something that, like you said, it'd be nice to do, if you think of someone.
Could this be something that... Would it be applicable to post it on the website so that the public could look at it, or is it just...
Absolutely, Kim.
Sure. Okay.
Can I make a motion that we...
Sure.
Do something.
Okay, okay, so Laura moves that we put this on our website, so that potentially you could maybe find somebody out there in the cap community that would be a candidate? Okay, any question on Laura's motion? Hearing that all in favor? Yes, carry, thank you, excellent. Okay, moving on to the municipal, um, awards submission letter. So this one here is the one that they usually do at the AUMA conference, and so these are the six categories. Almost a couple more, three or four, we don't qualify.
We apply a few years' budget for the solar park and work successful.
I can't think of anything that we've gotten really of, you know, of other...
Right, right now.
That's long, but if you get, again, if you can think of something. Okay, then move on to four point four. This is a letter of resignation from Louis Schmidt. I can't remember how long she's been on, but she's been on a couple of years anyway, I believe.
Oh, yeah.
She's done numerous terms at different times.
So it's kind of disappointing to hear that she's, you know, resigning. Excuse me, but on the other hand, she's definitely been an asset by the sounds of it, so... Okay, so any questions on that one? If not, somebody wish to file a correspondence? Okay, thank you, Laura. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing that all in favor? Yes, carry, thank you. Okay, moving on to five point one. Requests from the Early Childhood Development Coalition. Fairly self-explanatory, and then there's some photos there of... And the small amount it would cost every year to keep it up.
I'll make a motion that we give them thirty dollars a year they're asking for.
Yeah, we'll just come out of maintenance, but we just need approval to...
Yeah, so we can, if you'd like to do the recommendation, that will include the maintenance, is how I wrote it down, so...
Okay, yeah, thank you. Is that good enough then, under the recommendations?
Yeah.
Recommended motion.
Okay. Any question on Georgie's motion? Hearing that all in favor? Yes, carry, thank you. Okay, recommend appointment. Rec. Lee's... Recommending that we appoint Barbara Coffey as a member at large. For one year term, yeah. Any question on that? Somebody wish to move that? Laura again, Laura, sure, thank you. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing that all in favor? Yes, carry, thank you. Okay, moving on to five point three.
I should excuse myself from the discussion and voting on this one.
Okay. You noted that Georgie excused herself, it's for seven oh six, with cumulative interest. Okay, um, any questions on this one at all? They put it out for tender and had...
We actually didn't do a full tender, we just put it out to quotes from local suppliers.
Oh, sorry.
So, we had enough local suppliers to make a competitive, uh, cost estimates for council, so we didn't put it out to the general public. As you can see, the variety of costs through the analysis of the boiler system and keep it in par with what we have. It's not the lowest and not the highest, it's lining between the specifications, so that's why Stu has made the recommendation that he has and that that council approved RNG plumbing and gas heating proposal to replace the arena boiler system and cost of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and eighty-two cents to be drawn from the arena capital reserve, and then a contribution of eighteen thousand, four hundred and two ninety-one, as per the two thousand and five recreation agreement be requested from Vulcan County. We've already had that conversation through the capital planning, so this was identified for council as something we did, and we preemptively had those conversations with council during the budget session, so they do know that the request will be coming.
I like the chart there, just to compare. I think that's very transparent.
Yeah. Okay, any questions on recommendations? If not, somebody wish to make this motion? Laura? Any questions on Laura's motion? Hearing that all in favor? Yes, carry. Could you be kind enough to go get her?
I suppose so.
Thank you.
Seven oh eight.
Yeah, seven oh eight.
She's changed a little bit. Stephen knows how to come in the room without even the camera picking him up. So we'll announce it that you arrived?
Okay, so moving on to seven, or five point four, the hydroback tender approval. Would you like to speak to us, or is it...
Yeah, so Stu put together the report based on the conversation with council about the last exercise we went through for purchasing a tender, or a hydroback that we weren't successful with. Stu, when we received the quotes for comparables, realized that the money that council had put away would be enough to, with what he recently added, would be enough to purchase a machine. So what he's asking for is permission to actually put it out for tender if council's interested in purchasing that piece of equipment. So he's basically, just, it's been identified as something that we're looking to do, we were gonna put, if available, surplus monies to that this year. He's saying that you don't need to do that, and if you would like to tender it now, you can. So that's just brought to council to see if you'd like to do that.
Sure, I'll make that motion first, Stu.
Okay, Georgie moves that we proceed with the recommendations, that council's recommendation to prepare the tender documents for the purchase of the receiving quotes. So once the quotes come back, then we've got a chance to see how they can...
So is this, I guess, when we get quotes back, we'll see, is it gonna be brand new, or could it be a... What, new, used, like before?
He's gonna put it out for a branding, and see what comes back. There are, a lot of times when we do something like this for a specific piece of equipment, they will come back if there is a used piece available that meets the specs, but the idea is it has to meet the specs. So Stu puts out specs of what he's looking for, and based on the information from the last unit that we looked at, he's basically following those exact specs, so it'll be exactly what we looked at before.
Any other questions on Georgie's motion? Hearing that all in favor? Yes, carry. Okay, moving on to five point five. Growing Rural Tourism Conference.
Karen and I had an opportunity, Karen contacted the Badlands, and they've actually scaled back their conferences this year based on partnering on this one, so this is basically their biggest event for their conference. And they're still gonna do a one or two day thing, but it's not going to have the speakers and that sort of, as this conference, so... Laura showing interest in attending, and I know the county also made motion to send Lori Lickman as a tourism representative, so... Council John was showed interest in attending, so we put together this proposal.
So I guess you want us to approve this, right?
That's, yeah.
Somebody wish to make this motion? Laura? Thank you very much, any question on Laura's motion? Hearing that all in favor? Yes, carry. Okay, Stu, shred some documents.
Yeah. And this is just as per our policy, policy lays out when we do the shredding, and of course, because they are public documents, we need council's permission to do that. And we usually do it in December, we line the shredding truck up and realize that we haven't got official approval yet, so...
Yes. When I was with the chamber, one of the things we were looking at is getting a group together, if we could, for small businesses to shred documents together, save travel costs. Is this something that the town, that we could offer, say, they got a shredder coming down for this? Or does that have to be separate, because it's municipal?
For what we currently do, we would have to set up a different program. We basically pay by pound for what we do, so we call them, after we get permission from council, obviously, we call them, they come down and they charge us per total of what we put through, so... If we were to open a program like that, we should just put together a procedure for how we would do that.
Might not be a bad idea, get some ideas of what it would cost, and then, you know, I don't know how many other businesses.
Maybe if we talk, Michelle, if you have the chamber, you talked to Tom, maybe we could...
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's interest in that, then partnering on something like that, if they bring it through, we could definitely put something...
I know that the, like, you know, there's mobile shredders that come through all the time, you know, and, you know, do the banks, as an example, the hospital, on an ongoing basis, but I would assume we have very good supply of stuff that would have to be shredded here, I guess.
Yeah, they, we, last year, when we were looking at our shredding, we actually, the companies will supply boxes inside your facility that are locked, you put your documents in, and then they come and they do it on a yearly contract. Right now, we're not at the point where it was economical to go to a yearly contract, so we still retain what we can, and then we only bring them in for one or two, because we do have a shredder of our own that we still use. It's just Vulcan, you're getting rid of an entire year's worth of documentation.
Yeah.
And as things change, you know, we go more to a digital filing.
Our paper...
Our paper is going to eventually drop off.
When are they coming to do this, Kim?
We'll line it up after, but wanted to see...
I don't see exactly when.
Oh, she didn't say when, but she has contacted them, and we're just waiting on approval.
Okay.
They are at Lathridge, so it's not, we usually line it up when they come up for something else.
I just wanted to know if I should get all my old minutes put together, bring them over there beforehand?
For sure.
So would it be possible to hold up on setting a date until we're back to the chamber and seeing if...
Probably not, because...
Just set a date then, say if...
Yeah, and like I said, I think that what Laura was talking about, long-term with the chamber, to actually do a proposal and make it ongoing would be probably not much.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't hurt, you know, that's definitely, you know, I mean, I'm sure there's lots of groups that have documents that would like to be shredded and...
I know, we do with our business, and it's much cheaper to take our stuff to their center in Lathridge than it is to have them come out here. And if we could get a group together, then we'd say, ready, ready, blast.
Yeah, I think putting a proposal together, we could definitely do that.
Yeah, I know the place that I'm at, they have them come out, you know, they look somewhere to come out and do it once a year.
Look at it like a spring cleanup kind of thing.
But it might be something, like you said, you know, even if they personally pay X amount of dollars to have it done, it would be a benefit too, so... Okay, so does somebody wish to move that we dispose of the... Okay. Michelle? Any question on Michelle's motion? Hearing that all in favor? Did you vote, Michelle?
Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to five seven. Corridor Hartman Agreement.
Development Agreement.
Yes.
So hopefully this was pretty straightforward when we put it through. This development agreement has been in place since two thousand and six. It obviously included everything that was on the map, and since that time, through several years of changes and sales of the property, they've now phased it into three and then four. The current, we have a separate agreement for four A, and what they're wanting to close out is this. That's why the suggestion to enter into an agreement with them, so that any sales of these lots would be done as a bulk sale, rather than, like, they can't individually sell the lots. And that allows us to close out that agreement from two thousand and six. And when they start developing the next phase, we can actually have a clear, defined development agreement for that particular phase. Tom knows quite a bit of the history of how this came and went, and we've had three different owners up there since that original agreement. Basically, this is gonna help now to keep better track of the development. They've met all of the criteria for phase three A and three B, and so her recommendation, and administration's recommendation, is to close this development agreement and give us direction to enter into an agreement for C, sorry, B, C, and D.
So the four A one will still stay in?
It has its own standalone development agreement in place that council's already approved. So the, again, the interim agreement that we'll have for B, C, and D, for B, C, and D, we'll just cover off until we actually have a proper development agreement with securities, that sort of thing.
Does that change how these are taxed at all, or...
Nope.
No, it'll affect the road a bit, because the road will fall under us now.
For three.
For three.
Yeah, so by closing it out, you're actually accepting the liability for that it's complete, that in here, phase three A and B is now to an acceptable level, the town Vulcan will take responsibility for it. Four A still needs a second lift and pavement for that road, and again, that's why a full development agreement would include all of that road, but again, there's no, things aren't moving very quickly out there. We would like to keep the developers engaged so that, you know, they're moving forward. The only thing of the development agree, the original development agreement that is outstanding, and Nancy talked about it in her report, is it had an original build-out of seventy-five percent, so it said that the town wouldn't take responsibility for the road until it was at seventy-five percent. They're currently at thirty-two, and you know how long that road has been finished up there, how quickly the lots are moving? To get that to seventy-five, this development agreement would be open for quite a while, and in order for the developers to keep moving forward on four, we would like to, and that's the other ask of council, is to waive the, by closing out this development agreement, you'd be waiving the build-out from seventy-five to thirty-two percent.
Only on three A and three B?
Three A and B.
Is that gonna be a huge expense for us?
Not really.
Any other questions?
Any questions, yeah. If not, do we need to have two motions on this one here, or just the one, because one came in a PDF, just so...
Yeah, no, no, it was, one was a PDF, and one was a, that was just a publishing thing on our end. The recommendation stands.
That's why I thought they looked like the same recommendations on both.
Then we approved the closure of that specific agreement, V zero nine four dash zero six, zero whispering green, development phase three and four dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand and six, and direct administration to prepare a draft interim agreement with regards to phases four, B, C, and D, and present it to council for consideration. Make that motion.
Okay, so Laura moves the recommendation, this motion, any questions? Hearing that all in favor? Yes, carry, thank you. Okay, moving on to five point eight, rodeo grounds relocation.
I went through the report, gathered some information for council based on some of the questions that were being asked about the relocation. We received the letter from Norma. Bonnie's good enough to contact the other users that currently use the facility. Everyone that we talked to plans on remaining using the facility, so the other thing that we asked for was the usage, you can see how many hours everybody uses the facility. And then the last one is, Stu, we keep track of what's up there, so that, you know, if someone does get stolen or whatnot, we can make an insurance claim, so we went through the inventory, he went up and to a local vendor and asked what the replacement cost at today's value to replace all the equipment. Now, I do need to point out that there is a mistake in this. This number here for the sorting chutes, any of five thousand, that was, the total should have been five thousand, not forty. So that's the only one, so it drops the value thirty-five hundred of the, or thirty-five thousand of the total. But that's a list of what's up there and what it would cost council if you, if it were all to disappear and you were to immediately want to replace it, that's what the cost would be to the town. So based on that information, I add the letter, once I got the letter, I contacted Norma, obviously. I asked what the, when they said that they would like to relocate the rodeo grounds, I asked what was involved in that, and of course, my report, they indicated the entire facility. So if the entire facility goes, then we need to, from a town perspective, figure out how to accommodate the other groups that currently use it, because they all want to remain using it. So I contacted our lawyer, so that I could ask about, some questions about this, and the only recommendation at this point is that the town obviously can be held viable if you give away any equipment that was donated specifically for that, for that area. So say a family donated bleachers, and you gave it away to another group, and they came and wanted it, why did it leave? So... One of the things that was asked for is if you want to support that move for the rodeo, and that equipment will go with that, that proof of ownership be asked for before, because anything on a facility like that by a user group, as long as it's movable, that makes that ownership, so... So I put together this report, and just as an update through the weekend, I did have a few other conversations with some people in our community, and I also heard today from somebody else that there are some groups that are concerned about the proposal, because they have purchased equipment for them, don't want it being relocated, so that should spark some more conversation with the Ag Society to see, as this moves forward. So based on the conversation, I've not really had, as I put in my conclusion, like, council's direction on how you'd like to move forward, and one of the things that, through, again, through getting that legal opinion, was, you know, before anything leaves the grounds, it should have a proof of ownership before it goes, so I guess that was my recommendation, was to have council direct me to have a meeting with the Ag Society, so that we can inventory anything that they do want to remove from the site, and that they prove that they own it before they propose to take it anywhere. And like I said, I know we're recording the meeting, and the newspaper's here as well, but as word gets out about this, because of when our agenda Friday, as word gets out about this, there's going to be a lot more conversation from the public about it, so... We're pretty preliminary for this.
Yeah, we've had a great working relationship with all our service groups and partners, and, you know, we want to make sure that this is a fair and, you know, equitable, you know, process for both parties, you know, I mean, there was a rodeo grounds prior to the Ag Society investing in, you know, equipment on the site too, and so we have to be careful that we, you know, don't take the site and make sure that it's, you know, usable for other user groups that potentially have used it in the past and wish to use it in the future. Being that the Ag Society is moving to Champion, is what we've been told, you know, there might be grants that we could qualify for, you know, from the Ag Society area, fall into where we could use the money towards this facility in Vulcan, you know, being that they're gonna move to Champion, so I think that there are ways that we might be, you know, come up with some of the funds. Most of the groups, you know, aren't interested right at the moment in, you know, the bucking chutes or the steering, you know, those type of chutes, to start off with, but the panels for the perimeter, for security, for the other groups that are gonna use it are of a concern, so, but again, there might be some funding out there that, you know, we could qualify for under Ag funding, being that they're moving to another community. So this motion here gives the administration the permission to sit down with the Ag Society and the Vulcan District Ag Society and come up with a direction on, you know, what they believe they would like to move, and then to make sure that we, you know, show, you know, proper due diligence and look after the ownership of it, like, who paid for it and how it was paid for, make sure that the other groups that have put funds into that area up there are still protected.
I didn't realize some of the groups use it, I just kinda took it for granted, but it's interesting to...
I just kind of took it for granted, but it's interesting to.
Yeah, and originally that the group that started was, you know, Bob Langridge with his horse group. It wasn't started originally by, you know, any official group. They originally made a deal with the town to put up some poles and some fencing and the horse group started it. And then it's just mushroomed and expanded from there.
It's a good facility for the entire community.
You betcha. And there's, you know, lots of groups that put funding into that, into that area to make it what it is. And again.
One of them that was brought up to me today that was, is Spock Days has a significant contribution to it because before the Ag Society ran the rodeo, Spock Days did. So they invested in a bunch of that equipment, did purchase a bunch of it. So that was one that was brought up to me today. So that's definitely somebody that we'll have to talk to and put in contact with the Ag Society for. Because I believe that they purchased a bunch of the cattle handling equipment, so.
So anyway, this, this motion would, you know, start the process of discussing and, and again, you know, we want to make sure that it's, it's not a one-sided, that, you know, one, you know, one group doesn't think that, you know, they've been mistreated by another group. So we've been, had such a great relationship with all these groups and I don't think that we want to, you know, make it look like one group is taking advantage of them. So this would allow the administration to start the process of going through and sitting down with them and making sure that, you know, everybody feels comfortable in the end, that.
That isn't the advocate online, so to be serious.
There'll be a lot more stir in the public about it. Like I said, we, I got feedback from even our agenda going out. So the article in the paper will help get more people talking about it. The more people that talk about it, it'll open up that conversation. Because sometimes you don't remember who purchased something, but the person that did does. And they will, they will show up if they, if they feel that they're going to lose it from the community.
Okay, so we need to move forward this to make sure that this process is, gets going. So we need a motion to recommend that administration sit down with them. Laura? Okay, any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none on my favor. It's carried, thank you. Okay, the next one is pool design requests, which you saw the little kind of insignia or asterisk or whatever that little guy was there that Kim sent out so that it kind of flagged it. So everybody hopefully had an opportunity to read the information. It's quite self-explanatory. Kim and Bonnie and Gillian met, or Gillen? I'm trying to remember his name. Good thing I didn't have.
By the end of it, you'll have it.
They discussed all six proposals and shortlisted it to three. And then Kim phoned me on Thursday and asked if I would participate in it. Being that it has something to do with, you know, the pool itself. And I sat on that one committee. I didn't agree to sit with them. And it was quite interesting to hear the other three proposals that were shortlisted and how the philosophy of each group had. Like Kim said, there is a flavor of commonality to all three of the proposals. There, one, one group had two architects, one from, well, both were from B.C. came out. And one group had an architect or engineer group that came from the States to, with their, on the proposals. So like Kim said, there was six and well represented. The cost for the project or for them, you know, was, is not something to sneeze at. But yet, on the other hand, the two that were probably shortlisted to the, were very close in price.
When we got down to two, they were within ten thousand dollars of each other.
And the, and again, they all brought different levels of expertise to the proposal. The one that's being proposed, this HDR, has had two people that were heavily involved in pool design and build. And the, but yet they, they bring lots of expertise to the table. So both Tango and, and the three, you know, the three of us met, we felt that HDR was the one that we should recommend to council to move forward. So they would start their process by, once we give this permission to go forward, they'll, they'll start the process of doing some color sensations and then they'll do some, preliminary design and then they'll do a cost analysis of that preliminary design and then they'll bring back the recommendations and then go from there. So all the three felt that, you know, our price range was close, what we're proposing for the facility. The budget. And they all, three of them felt that, three groups felt that the time factor that we're proposing is doable too, so. Anyway, so we have the recommendation both from the group end, from Tango to move forward with the HDR's proposal.
I know you can see all the cost estimates for the entire project. The range was, the low was at three hundred, very, very close to three hundred. The high was at about four hundred. The groups that we interviewed were all very close to each other. I guess at the last two, when we shortlisted, we're down to between ten thousand dollars apiece. And based on the conversation that you guys had with Tango, knowing that design and this cost estimate portion of it is approximately ten to fifteen percent of a project, we think that our pricing is very good.
Okay, because it says recommendations not to exceed the three hundred and fifty-eight. So now what happens if it goes over? Does it have to come back to council and get?
Yeah, anything over three hundred and fifty. And what they did in their quote is they gave a fixed cost of what to get to the end. And then there was some variables. So we've added the three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars is the cost that they quoted us for that through this request for proposal. Anything above that will have to be brought back to council because, of course, again, for the camera and the paper, anything outside that reserve, that needs a motion from council to pull funds from there. So you're approving three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars to be drawn from that.
Okay, and that's just for the pool? That's not just building, it's not size?
No, that's, yes, that's a whole pool design of the.
That's to design the pool.
The pool, it's the design of the pool, building, design of the landscaping, the whole works. It's, you know.
The end of this, we should be a shop drawings and we can have to a contractor to say, build this.
Yeah, give us a price on how much it's going to cost to build it. And in that, in that, like I said, they'll bring it to a certain, excuse me, a certain level and then they'll bring back some costing. I did question on the costing and they said that they feel fairly secure that the cost analysis that they will come back with will be very close. And again, the two lady, the lady and the fellow from Vancouver felt that in Alberta, this is probably one of the best times to build a pool because of the marketplace and because of the tenders that have come in for some of the other stuff. And so they'll come back with some suggestions too. They might come back and say, yeah, no, we can do all of this wishlist. And they might come back and say, no, there's something on the wishlist, might be an extra. And then, then that's when we have to come back because, and that's where they all felt that they could come in that, you know, budgeted amount and be approved.
This is to get us to?
Yeah, the building.
The building.
And then, yeah, there's the building, the pool, basin, landscaping, the mechanical, electrical, all of that.
The good parts, the whole thing.
The whole thing, yeah. So again, like Kim said, that we'll be able to take this out, once it's finished, send it out and have it tendered on and then, then the process starts. Now, once the tendering process is in place, then the other half falls into place where, you know, there'll be.
Figure out how we paid for it.
Yeah, hopefully, yes.
This, this is drawn from capital reserves or put together specifically for this purpose?
For the budget.
It's hoped to go to the construction of a pool.
Okay, Lyle?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. Council approves, administration.
Okay. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none on my favor. It's carried. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the committee reports. Horse to executive minutes. Any questions on? Okay. No questions, we'll move on to the executive meeting on Golf Club. Any questions on either one of those two? If not, we, anyone who wishes to move the motion to, George Neil's motion to follow correspondence? Or Canadian reports, sorry. Canadian reports, yeah. Any question on George Neil's motion? Hearing none on my favor. It's carried. Okay, and thank you. Now we'll move on to councilors' reports. Mr. Taylor is not here tonight. Counselor DeBolt.
I had the regional rec meeting. There was Lowman, Milo, Champion, Carmengate, North West Recreation, which is Arrowwood mostly combined together in that. The CRC, we found out this meeting, will be closed from January first to August, the end of August for rentals. They share it or paint it and do whatever. On April thirteenth, they're going to be putting a trade show in the CRC. And on April thirteenth, there's a garden show at the lodge hall, same day. So they're hoping those two will kind of balance each other off, they'll go to one and then they'll go to the other one. And I went, I had that CSS. And they said that the freezer in the fridge in there is not hooked into the alarm system because of the cost. So that was the end of that. According to their profit and loss, they were just over their budget by a little bit, not enough to really look at kind of thing, so. And we had some conversation about them being open during the lodge hour for people to go in and stuff like that. But it was, it wasn't received well, so it was, it's going to stay the way it is. They changed a lot of their job positions around in there. Now, a lot of people aren't doing the job they did before, they're doing a different job now. A lot of them have two job titles now, so they've just won that honor. They did rentals over the Christmas break. They took their reception that was usually in the middle of the building, they moved it to the front door, which was, I thought, a good move. Because now people go right to reception as soon as they go in. And in the food bank, they found out they needed more shelving, so they're going to have to buy them and install them. The ampers were down a bit this year, the Christmas ampers. But I think that's because they put a new policy in place to get an amper, where before it was just kind of wishy-washy and that. And now they've made it sort of active, show ID and stuff like that. So they've made it a little bit more streamlined. They followed kind of the template from other food banks they've talked to. And this is how they do it, so they did it this way here. Seemed to work well for them, so. And tomorrow I have the Marcus Foundation for Lorna, so that's all we'll have this week.
Okay, any questions for George Neil? Did you see the CRC is going to be closed?
Yep, from April to the end of August, or July first, sorry. July first to the end of August, there's the trade show in April in there. Yep, they're going to paint, they're going to, I don't know, fix some stuff in there and whatnot, so.
Yeah, it's for sure, their, Bonnie was going to work with them in case somebody has a booking already. But from now on, if somebody wanted to book in July, they couldn't book because they wanted to do.
Sound system lighting, it sounds like there's quite a bit of.
Yeah, they've got quite a big proposal, but, you know, I'm not sure exactly how much they're going to get done.
Because it's only two months, July, August.
Yeah, but they said that they would work around, like they might be able to work Monday to Friday and then, you know, have the Saturday, Sunday, you know, they'd be gone. So they could, you know, because work around it if there is a group that's already booked. But if there isn't a group booked, then they would, that way they don't have to spend hours cleaning up, you know, for the Saturday, Sunday and then, you know, start back over on Monday, so. Makes sense. They upgraded the air handling system a while back, back in November, I believe it was, or December, first part of December, so the heating and air conditioning systems.
Yeah, everybody seemed to be on board with it, you know, facelift in there, so.
I think if they're looking for shelving, like in temporary portable shelving.
For the food bank?
Yeah, if they put the word up there, because I know when some people are selling their places, they don't always want to take, if they've got extra shelving, take it with them, especially if they're downsizing, the people moving in may not want it. If there's, they could post it somewhere.
Yeah, on their website or something, or on their newsletter that they send out every week.
Exactly, and they could share it even on social media just to get the word up there. That might save a few bucks.
Same with that liquidation world, or liquidation places closed up now and they've got a bunch of shelving stuff in the building, so.
Maybe available.
They might be available.
Might be available.
You know, they might be able to hold with Amor, not you, but me, yes, yes, yes.
The Gigi's always a good place to get that kind of stuff.
Yeah, because I think they were looking at Costco to buy it. I thought that somebody said they would go to Costco and get the product.
And with the, with the freezer fridge, being that it's not tied in there, I still think they need to have a policy where it's checked daily.
Well, they did check it with their insurance. They have a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. The insurance, so, and nobody checked it within three days. At least they had to be checked like every third day and nobody to check it, so the insurance rate.
But I mean, I mean, I think that, you know, when they have something that can be perishable like that, I think they should have a daily process. And, you know, I think that they either need to look into doing it themselves, looking into tying it into alarm system or, or hiring somebody that would go in there and check it on a daily basis. You know, because it's pretty sad when you get, you know, food donated to them or they purchase from donated money and then have it perish because the process.
It's a freezer again, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and it's not happens. I mean, that's, it's, you know, but anyway. Anything else for George Neil? Wow, you're up, Mr. Magnuson.
On January sixteenth, I had the Vulcan County Tourism and Trade Fair planning committee meeting. It's, as George Neil said, yeah. They're planning the trade show on April the thirteenth. And according to the advocate, it will be from ten till four thirty on date. That's the only committee meeting that I had. On my other life, I was also, went to the Banff Western Connection Real Estate Conference. And our badges, I bought badges and ears to take with me to distribute to people. But people, people come up to me to get ears from years before. I've got people from New York that I've given ears to and badges. It was a great opportunity to help sell Vulcan. And I just, I can't say enough how those are to help me promote my business and promote the town at the same time.
Okay, any questions for Lyle?
Thanks for being a great ambassador.
It's fine.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Ms. Thomas.
I had a library meeting. They had Petland bring some animals in on the twenty-fifth. And there was a reading contest. Hopefully, everybody reported that they read fifteen minutes that day. The library's looking into having an opioid crisis seminar, both at the library and potentially at the high school. They're doing soup and soap for Valentine's Day on the seventh of February. Looking at getting Tai Chi, Taiji, Tai Chi. Person that can teach instructor, that's what I was looking for, for this summer. And they're applying for the Minister's Award of Excellence for library service.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any questions for Lyle? Okay, moving on, Ms. Little.
It feels like forever since I've actually been on the state, it's been a slow, last little phase. Regular chamber meeting, victim services, one thing that's not necessarily in our committee meeting, but that is really, really neat for representing our community is Nicole Larson, who's our victim services coordinator. This weekend went with her curling team for provincials, representing our area. So that was really neat. It was on TV and all the good stuff, and their team did great. Yeah, so that was kind of a side of, it was awesome seeing our community up there. So that was kind of a side of, it was awesome seeing our community up there and represented. Unfortunately, the CCCR, um, the Elder obese committee was canceled. Um, and then this week I've got regular chamber meeting, as well as going to the health and wellness meeting for Lorna.
We have the chamber meeting?
Wednesday, Wednesday, at seven.
Okay, at the lodge hall.
I can email you your back check after the lodge or the- I can email you for sure.
Thanks.
Okay, any questions for Michelle? Hearing none, I'll move on to councillor Armstrong, which isn't here, so we'll move to me. Um, again, like Michelle said, this has been a slow start off, but, um, we did have a SEWON meeting at Fitch Boot. So I got a chance to walk over and see how their Fitch Boot swim pool's coming, which is, you know, I guess they just didn't get started until December, but they've got some of their stuff going on it. So I had an opportunity to visit with a couple of the councillors about the pool, and the process that they went through. And how they changed from a philosophy of a pre-design to a design-build, and some of the wrinkles that they granted to either way, so. Uh, it's pretty good, so. But SEWON's still moving along, and they, they applied for a grant, which we were supposed to have, uh, know by now. And, um, we haven't been told whether we got the grant or not, but, uh, so they're kind of, I, I don't think it's an election thing, but it is an election thing, I think. So, I, it's the process that, uh, it is with the grant. You know, they gave us a deadline when it will be announced, but, uh, they, they tell us they can't talk about it because it hasn't been announced. And then, um, today, I, you know, had a meeting with the three different groups. And, um, again, like Lyle said, um, both Kim and I were sitting there with our pins, and, and, you know, that was the first thing that a couple of them questioned.
Asked for.
And, yeah, and, and another one, you know, commented on our polls, our ice free lights. So again, you know, the, you know, these people do notice, um, and, and again, you know, it's part of their, their ploy to, uh, work into the process, but, uh, one, well, two of them really, um, put some of the Vulcan into their proposal, too, so. You know, just kind of need to see how many, um, the fellow from, uh, the United States, he talked about how, you know, it is a, it is a big drawing card, and, and, so, you know, you can see how tourism theoretically does work in, in different ways, like Lyle said, so. Um, other than that, um, you know, we've got a public meeting coming up on Thursday night, is it for the?
Yes, the thirtieth.
Thirtieth? Yeah, oh no, it must be Wednesday night.
Wednesday.
Um, we forgot.
June four and seven, I think, isn't it?
Yes, yes, Wednesday, the thirtieth.
The thirtieth, and then, and then, um, on Thursday night, we, um, I, the retention committee has a farewell for Dr. Lorenz, who's moving up. So, other than that, that's about all I've participated in on behalf of the town. Any questions for me?
Was there any feedback in terms of talking to the other councillors, um, things that they maybe wish they would have done or haven't done, or that kind of words of wisdom?
On, on, on-
With the pool, sorry.
With pool stuff?
In, in you.
No, not really, I mean, I mean, I, I think they, they saw how, I mean, the same thing as what, you know, we've seen, you know, community feedback about the questions on, um, you know, what you want and what you can't afford, and, you know, and what, what is your theoretically goal for your pool for the next fifty years, which is really hard to do. Like, I mean, if you've got a really active swim club, you know, you might lean more to, you know, lots of lanes. If you have a really active, um, group, but I, I think everybody kind of looks at that, the, the slide is a, a big plus. You know, like, you know, most people talk about Raymond's Pool, how, how family-friendly it is. And, um, I think that's what everybody is trying to scheme or, you know, work towards, is a family, family facility. And so I, I think that's what, um, those two gentlemen spoke on, um, at the same meeting. Okay, thank you, any other questions?
Just one more comment with the people I spoke to and down, when I was talking about Vulcan. They were asking, well, what's, what's new coming up, and telling them about Vulcan. And I also told them about the potential birds of prey, and their eyes just go, hey. So hopefully that's something, so I was promising that people are kind of excited about it.
Well, I, I think once we, you know, again, more or less with the birds of prey and that, I mean, I think anything we do, you know, like that adds as a, it's just like the, you know, once we get our new float finished, I think it's gonna be another, you know, attractive, um, drawing card. You know, it's gonna be, you know, a, a-
Good showcase.
Another showcase, you know, item to, to, you know, show our community off. And again, you know, more or less about, you know, once you go through the process and, and pick a location for this other ship, this birds of prey ship. And, you know, sooner or later we get three or four, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a big undertaking for the community to, to move that forward, but, uh, and it's nice to see that, you know, there's a group of people that are interested in moving that forward, so. Okay, anything else? If not, somebody wished to move the council reports? Lyle? Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none on paper. That's great, thank you. Okay, moving on to the action report from administration.
We completed most everything from the January fourteenth meeting, except for obviously the two, uh, the purchase of the machine and, uh, the bringing back the proposal, so. Uh, the proposal one will most likely be on there for, for a while until we get that together. But the rest of the list is, has come along, unless there's any questions about anything on there?
For the, uh, the second point, uh, for the golf course to, we need a year of data to-
Oh, for the, for the bat boxes, yeah. And we're just kind of following up when, when Stu gets an opportunity to, to check with them. They relocated some, uh, the consensus was they kind of need to be next to trees, that sort of thing, some kind of shelter.
Yeah, that's what I'm-
Because it was originally the dog park.
Yeah, the, the dog park was the original proposal, and when we first, when they first put them up, they, it was so hard to tell whether they were being used or not, and so that, that's why, uh, collecting the data. And so far from what we've heard is they need to be sheltered. So, a place like the dog park where there's no shelter-
Yeah.
It, it will, it would basically just be a-
And a trade truck.
It'd be a, be a, it'd be a box on a stick.
Yeah, I don't know how the, the-
The vibration from, I don't-
Oh, maybe, I don't know.
Somebody could say that, that wouldn't work generally because of the train being so fierce.
Well, it could be, I, I don't know, I mean-
I know pine trees work really well, because they work in my yard.
Yeah, we've got bats in our yard, too, but, um, you know, I, I don't know whether, and, and just over, just over here, there's a fellow that's got a tree by Mary Lou Fishel's place, that's got a couple of-
Boxes.
Boxes there, too, but I don't know, again, it's a tree area, too, so, being wide open like that, so. But that, that's why it's still on on this file, is we're kind of waiting to see-
We'll get Stu to try to put together a report, but that actually gives you good data.
I mean, the bad thing about it is, is that, you know, most, most people would never know whether there's a bat in the bat house unless you, you know, are out in the evening to see them flying in and back.
And the request came because of the amount of mosquitoes that are in that area.
Yeah, that's true.
So, depending on your herb and seed, you do something like that, so. So again, we just wanted to make sure that we actually had decent data for you, rather than saying, well, we heard this, or-
Okay.
And the golf course was the only one that was actually evaluating their stuffs.
Okay, any other questions on the action list? If not, somebody wished to-
You can, you can actually do that all on us.
Oh, okay, we can do both, I guess, then, good, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the administration report.
You had the opportunity to go through, I am sure if anything stood out to you, I can answer any questions, but the highlights were basically, uh, getting, uh, the feedback from the first recorded meeting, um, the public feedback, that from a few people that we informed about, it was really good. The, uh, the implementation, they were, they were happy with, uh, there's some things, had the recording of the, uh, in-camera portion. When we paused it, it actually ended the meeting, so, uh, there's, we're working through, uh, how to fix that. Of course, we need to go in camera sometime to test that, so, uh, we'll do a little bit more playing with it. And, uh, we've, uh, created the visitor services job, uh, uh, sorry, the visitor services advisory job description. We posted the ad, we received sixteen applications, so we're gonna be going through those here in the next week or so. And during that process, I also reviewed all of the community services, uh, job descriptions and, uh, the recreation coordinator. Just kind of, just so that we can update them and bring them into alignment to what, what we want them actually doing. So, uh, that took some time. The pool RFPs, um, was pretty, a, a lot of work to get to that shortlist, reading those proposals, they were, you know, they're hundred-page re, uh, reports, so. Going through them and picking out that data, doing the comparison, then committing to shortlist, three out of the six was, it was a significant undertaking as well, so. And I'd like to thank Tom for, we, we asked him because it was connection to the pool committee and knowing that, uh, we wanted council representation on that, because then, if it, if we don't have council representation, then it's just a recommendation from the administration, so. Uh, seeing that inside of that process, I think was hopefully pretty helpful. And, uh, yeah, we did the interviews today, uh, working on some other stuff. The, uh, on my last agenda notes, I, uh, put in there that, uh, the CPO had to, uh, one, for the complaint that it had potential to become informal. That did go through, so we're in the process of, uh, of going through our manual, making sure that we do the investigation, as we're supposed to, through solicitor general. So, uh, after that's all resolved, we'll, uh, let council know if there's going to be any changes. Right now, the way it looks, probably a policy change on the way that we do things is, is probably gonna be the recommendation, but we'll have to see after the investigation's done. And, uh, other than that, pretty straightforward, met with the developers for the development agreement. Tango, I compass, I compass is, we're getting near the end of our implementation, so they are asking for weekly meetings to make sure that we're hitting all the holes that we want to, and I think that we are. Every day Karen and I find something else inside the program that we ask the questions about that makes our lives that much easier. We found on last week that just automatically prints off all of our, uh, motions from the meeting that are relevant to other people, we can just even add to them, rather than- So there's a lot of stuff that we're really taking advantage of with this program, so. Other than that, if, any other questions, or?
One thing I noticed, because my battery died on my laptop, so.
Okay.
Would it be good to have on there, like when people are, are watching us, if we can, in the top corner of the screen, have a, like if we're comparing costs for, uh?
Yes, so, uh, I can, I can bring it up right now, uh, I'll, I'll apologize if there's feedback. If you're watching a council meeting at home and you have the agenda available, you can put the video up. And then if you go back to any portion of the, it puts the meeting in the corner and your minutes here.
No, I, is that what you meant, Lyle, or you wanted to know how many people were watching it?
No, no, I just, something like that, just so people could kind of, when they are watching, they can follow along. So this is exactly how you do it, you put the meeting up in the corner, and then you can pick anything from the agenda. And it's there. So it's, uh, I, actually, last week was talking to Stephen, and we're working through, trying to, uh, uh, something in the paper to try to let people know how they can, um, and, uh, yeah, there's a lot of good features in this, so, yeah, if you're online, watching the, and we're doing that right now, that's, that's live, what people can see in the corner there.
Oh, I, I, I thought you were wanting to know if we could see how many people were physically watching it live, or? I, I know that, um, it'll tell us how many people have been on that.
Yeah, afterwards we can traffic it on YouTube, how many views we had.
How many views you had, so like, and you had the day when Kim and I were talking, it was, I think, about forty, you had, you know, that was the day after.
Yeah, fifty-three totals, I think it's up a little bit now.
So, I mean, you know, you can kind of, you know, you know, so it's, it's kind of interesting to see what our numbers are of that.
So our big one through here is probably an educational process, we want people to access this through our portal. Because through our portal, they'll have access to the agenda. Uh, Karen's actually timestamping the meeting as we go, so if somebody goes in and wants to look at a specific portion of the meeting, they just watch that portion of the meeting. So, where, Lyle, you probably went home, I'm guessing you went home and had a look at it, you probably brought it up on YouTube?
Yes.
But if, if, if you bring it up through, if you bring it up through our agenda like this, you can, uh, you can see all of the information that, uh, that council is actually looking at. Because I was wondering about how we could, you know, over, overlay some of the reports, that sort of thing, and there's, there's no need to. Because in watching some of the ones that we had on VTV, there was times where council read a report, it was pretty slow to watch while everybody sat doing this. And that's why we're trying to get everybody to, uh, to follow it through the agenda. Because once, once you've got it up, you can have it playing, and once it's time stamped, you can also skip. So every time you go to a different report, it actually starts the video from that, from that portion of the meeting, so.
That's really intuitive.
It's, it's an awesome, it's an awesome addition to-
But like Kim says, though, too, it's a bit of a learning curve for us, you know, whether it's, you watch it through the portal, or whether you watch it through, you know, and, and Lorna did comment back, and I'm not sure if she's watching it again tonight or not, but, uh, she had watched it, and-
She said she missed us.
So she, so I-
I don't believe her, but she said it was nice.
Buck is a little smarty-ant, smarty whenever he's out.
But again, theoretically, you know, um, you know, as a councillor, if, if, you know, like Paul as an example, he could be at home right now, watching it, and then, you know, he's up to speed on everything other than in-camera session, if we have a new camera. Which allows you as councillor, if you're away and are able to do it, then at least you can be up to speed on at least some of the information that was sent out, and some of the discussion that happened on-
Big one is the context of the conversation.
Yeah. So, again, I, I, when you'd asked that, I wasn't sure what you asked for.
So, uh, bef, because we didn't let a whole bunch of people know in the public, uh, for our first task, last meeting, I actually contacted Walchris Law, which who actually watches all of our, our meetings. And so he watched it, he actually paused it, went through, he, and I asked him for any feedback, so I didn't really give him a bunch of direction, how to navigate stuff, I just let him. And he gave me the feedback the next day, and then he went back in and watched different things again, and used the timestamps and that, and came back with just a, a really, really nice email saying, you know, I went in and played with it further, really liked it. Uh, I know that my wife watched the very first one, and she was able to pause it, but kids bed, come back up, and, so she'll know exactly when I'm supposed to be home at night. Which is good.
Oops.
Hello.
Guard.
So then it, it might be good to have on our, our website, a little YouTube instructional video from you and Karen.
Oh, I know, I, I'd like to get it.
Play with it and-
But we'll, we'll see how Stephen's article goes first. I have all, all, all the faith. But yeah, no, that's exactly what we're doing, is it, is once it's there, and then just trying to educate people on, on, on how to use it. And like I said, doing it through our portal is, is really good, because you basically, the exact same way that you guys go in to see the agenda, the public sees it exactly the same, we can lock out the stuff that is private, when you go in camera, they can't see it, same thing, turn off the video. And it, it's really, i- it's amazing how good of a tool it, it's become. And I, I think the more we use it, the better, better we'll get out of it. And the better value for the public, you know. There is a cost to it, we gotta make sure the public's using it and get the best out of it. Like I said, the timestamp for me, for me to be able to write a letter, when you guys make a motion to say no to a skyrise in the middle of Main Street, all I have to do is put down, please view the video, and I can take the tag from that and put it right in the letter. And somebody can go and type that URL into their, you know, you can do it off your phone, and they can instantly see the conversation of why you guys won't let a skyrise be built in the middle of Main Street. I, I think it's really good, it's, it's really gonna help a lot of things.
And I think I might encourage to a little bit more engagement, where if they're the community group that come forward with a specific issue, they're not going to go through and watch the hour, two hour, three hour of everything else, but be able to go in and click and see, they get more involved. And they get the opportunity to have that education and background on it, too. And that context, I think that's really important for us.
And that context, I think that's really important for us to communicate to the public as well, so that's really fantastic.
I mentioned Tom, more people will watch it live if they don't like something that you say when they're only seven blocks away. They could be watching it bigger during the same meeting, so something to be aware of.
They won't get a chance to talk.
But they, but they'll show up.
Because obviously, the one gentleman that wanted this talk and went like this, I got reminded that I. But anyway, so, no, great, any other questions or comments on Kim's reports? Okay, if not, Georgely moves on. Any comments on Georgely's motion to file the two reports? Hearing none, all in favor? It's Carrie, okay, we need one more adjournment motion, thank you for Michelle. Almost gave it away. Any question on Michelle's motion, hearing none, all in favor? It's Carrie, thank you very much, folks, for.
That was eight, then?
Yeah, eight, ten.
You sure that we are quick as council meeting.
Oh, no, we've got some quicker ones, yes, but it's been quick. Thank you very much, everybody, for participating.